Can I entertain a motion to come out of closed session?
Make that motion.
A motion or have a second?
A second.
Let's start with Mr. Early. Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Bryant.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
And I vote yes. I'm going to ask all the board members to certify, a certification resolution, whereas the Carroll County Board of Supervisors convene a closed session in this state pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote on the motion to close the meeting in accordance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act where as section 2.2-3711D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board Supervisor that such closed session was conducted in conformity with Virginia law and under 2.2-3711 we went under A1, A6, and A8 and therefore being resolved that the Carroll County Board of Supervisors hereby certify that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were heard, discussed, or considered in a closed session to which a certification applies and on such business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in a meeting to which a certification applies. As each one certify, start with Mr. Early.
I also certify.
Mr. Collins.
I also certify.
Mr. Bryant.
I also certify.
Mr. Horton.
I also certify.
Mr. Moore.
I also certify.
And I say certify. And next on the agenda, I'll ask Mr. Collins, lead this invitation and pledge, please.
Father, thank you for this opportunity to be here tonight. I pray that you give us guidance, direction, and lead us in our county government. Jesus, amen. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next on the agenda is Business Recognition, Virginia 500. I understand Mr. Collins and McCraws do it. Not making.
Yeah, they've had some issues come up.
Okay, we'll reschedule that for November, please. Okay, next on the agenda is Poppers Gap Rescue Squad. We have a proclamation I'm going to read and ask that you, the board, pass. Whereas Poppers Gap Rescue has been a cornerstone of safety, service, and community support and tirelessly provided emergency medical services and whereas for the past 50 years the members of Poppers Gap Rescue Squad have displayed dedication and bravery, often risking their own safety to save the lives of others in times of need. And whereas Poppers Gap Rescue has been a source of comfort and support to the residents of Carroll County responding to calls and emergencies with compassion and skill. And whereas the outstanding service provided by Poppers Gap Rescue Squad over the past 50 years has earned them the respect, admiration, and gratitude of Carroll County and has established him as an exemplary model of dedication and service. And now therefore being resolved that the Carroll County Board of Supervisors hereby recognize and honor Poppers Gap Rescue for 50 years of service and extend our appreciation to its members, past and present, for their remarkable contributions to the safety and well-being of our community. This is every day, October 2024.
I make motion to put that past that.
Okay, have a motion. Start with Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mr. Bryant.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Early.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, I'll ask Poppers Gap to come up. We have a strip of appreciation. You want to present it, man? We'll present to you. Appreciate everything you all do. You want to say some words?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Go back here.
So, I thank you guys for having us. It's our 50th year. We hope to have an open house once things settle down in the communities. There's a little history about us. We have five trucks, two response vehicles. We have 30 total members with 17 being paramedics, one intermediate, and advanced, and the rest are the employees. So, we're pleased with what we have. It wouldn't be possible without these guys here that's done a lot of stuff this night. I think we've got a couple here that's been in for over 30 years with us. And we greatly appreciate your all's support, especially with the new truck that's coming. Reaching the need for us, we've been paid to load over 1,000 piles already this year. And we also have a new building that we're building right now in our government community. Hopefully have it done by late winter.
I personally want to thank you for everything. And I know during the hurricane, you guys were great. I heard you on the scanner, heard you being called, we really stepped up. When you were at the station giving out water and stuff for the community, we really appreciate what you did. Couldn't do it without you. Anybody else have anything you want to say?
I do that, you know. Poppers Gap, not only is it their service to the community, just whenever in time of need, since throughout to the fair and play market, whatever, probably there. Important to do. Thank you all.
Thank you guys for what you do. I'm very proud of Poppers Gap Rescue so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate every one of you. Great impact to the community and I give it up.
But all they said, we appreciate your step in and serving.
And I'll echo it also. I've known many of you on the squad here from when I was here the first time. It's good to see familiar faces and we really appreciate all you do.
And next on the agenda is the aviation training program. You want to come up to the podium, please?
Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Larry Letterer and I live in Woodlawn, Virginia. I have an aviation science program I'd like to introduce to you and gain your support. But because you don't know who I am, I'll give you a real quick rundown, tell you who I am and my professional experiences. So, my professional background, I presently work as a regulatory compliance manager for a company that flies hypersonic drones. I do this remotely. Prior to that, I've been a part-time adjunct instructor at a community college for aviation program. I've also was a subject matter expert for next generation FAA equipment that's used in air traffic control and various other things. I was an air traffic controller at Washington Center. As a matter of fact, my airspace is right above us, actually right above Temecquehue Approach, above Lynchburg Approach. So, I used to vector aircraft for approaches into Lewisburg, Hot Springs, South Boston, and trails for things like aircraft going to Atlanta and going to Washington, Baltimore. So, that's my air traffic background. I'm also a certified tower operator, commercial instrument engine pilot. I worked at NASA as a project manager on one of their aviation programs there. In addition to that, I deployed as a mission commander in a site Lee flying unmanned systems against Abu Sayyaf in the southern Philippines. Yes, we had US soldiers there. A lot of people didn't know that, but that's where I was. So, prior military intelligence officer and prior sergeant. My educational background, I have a master's in aviation safety. This is where the community college plays a big part, played a big part in my career in aviation. I have associate flight science with the community college and professional piloting and another one in air traffic. That's my professional background. So, the objective of this briefing right now is first, I want to introduce myself and let you guys know what my background is. If you have any questions for me, feel free to ask them. Also, I want to, I want to relate how the relationship between the airport, the college, and Twin, Twin County Airport growth, local economy development. So, by initiating a aviation program here, I believe that we can really increase the economic growth within Carroll County. I'll get into that a little bit later on. The third objective of this briefing is to collectively develop some action items, develop a network, because this isn't just the county that we need to really get this going. And I haven't introduced myself to the president of the community college yet, so maybe discuss that. So, those are the meeting objectives. That's why I'm here. Okay, so here's the proposed aviation program. It would be an accredited aviation program, associate degree program of applied sciences because it would involve degrees in unmanned remote sensing. That's, and remote sensing is the payload that goes underneath the drone. That's used for a lot of different things. And I have another slide on that we'll get to. Professional piloting, that's commercial airline pilot, certified flight instructors, and aviation maintenance. So, these, these are the first three initial programs I'd like to introduce. If you ever have a moment, I've put some hyperlinks at the bottom of this slide. Those are two different, they're both CCBC, but they're two different colleges. One's Baltimore, one is, the other one's in Pennsylvania. But they're both community college aviation sciences programs. And I kind of want a pattern, what we could do here after those, okay? And then potentially do more than that. Okay, so this would be a crawl, walk, run phase doing this, okay? Right now, we are in the crawl phase. So, right now, I'm trying to garnish some political support, okay? I understand this, this would also require state and federal levels of support too. I also want to get the local community college approval. Would have to capture some sort of funding to initiate this. Hire, and then from there, we'd hire classroom instructors, develop accredited classes at the college, and then we'd also have to prepare the airport to support this, okay? And so this is where we are right now. This is where I'm trying to bring this. So, after we get this program up and going, the next phase would be the walk phase, okay? And we'd stand up first associate degree path in aviation sciences, which would be those three right there. Not necessarily in that order. Like I said, this is fluid and dynamic. I haven't approached the college about it, which I'm going to, and I'd have to get their feedback and see how they'd want to go with this. So, this is the walk phase, where we actually stand up an associate degree program within aviation sciences, one, two, or three of those, and then continue to work to build the elements. Once those three are stood up, then we're in the run phase, okay? So, from here, we're going to establish additional aviation-based programs. There'll be multiple degree programs, okay? So, here's, this slide here shows the core aviation programs, which would be professional piloting, AMP aircraft, airframe and power plant, certification for maintenance, unmanned systems, UAS, and this ties into, I guess, the correction science degree and there's some other degrees that this would tie into. And I'm not sure if the, I looked, I didn't see any, but the airport fire risk, you know, there's associate degree program there, but this would tie into that also. So, having these associate degree programs as the core would be the remote sensing, the unmanned systems, even a flight attendant associate degree program, aviation safety, and air traffic control. And I'll talk a little more about the air traffic control in a moment. The other degree programs located beneath that, they tie into what is currently being offered at the community college, okay? It would be, it would not be all that much work for these to be tied into it. They would just have to take some already established courses for the most part and integrate that into the current curriculum, okay? So, here's, this, this is the air traffic control piece. So, if we can offer an air traffic control program here, this would not be, this would be under the run phase, okay? This is something called remote tower. And I've worked as a subject matter expert in helping to develop this and field this, okay? I have a website located in the middle of this slide. However, if you go there, that is a European, okay? And that, that shows this effort's been stood up and is very, it's currently robust in Europe. We are, we're in a proof of concept phase right now in the United States with this, but it's coming. Right now, Leesburg, Virginia, they have a remote tower. That's their SOP. And what this does is you have 180-degree field of view monitors that cover 360 degrees, okay? So, the controller that's looking at this in a room just like this is looking at these screens and he's controlling or she's controlling ground and local control, which are the aircraft that are flying around, okay? So, this requires a camera house. If you look at the structure in the middle right, it shows that orange camera house on top, and the controller's able to zoom in, zoom out. You have MTI, which is Moving Target Indicator. So, that controller's sitting there and he or she is controlling traffic. However, from a control area, like I said, just like this room, they can press a button and go to another airport and then to another airport. So, if you have three people manning this, that operations center, you can control three airports at one time. So, what that translates to you is a much cheaper cost and able to have your class Delta surface area and airspace, which is tower air traffic control airspace, okay? Which right now, Twin County is uncontrolled, but we can have, actually have air traffic controllers in there, have costs effective by spreading it across multiple airports, okay? So, if you're curious on that, feel free to ask me more questions on it. So, here is remote sensing. We were talking before about drones. This area, Carroll County, can benefit extremely from using unmanned systems, okay? So, with a drone, you could do mapping, okay? Map soil properties, crop yields, and water resources. You can also monitor, monitor crop health, weeds, and diseases. You can do predicting with the payloads that are located underneath the drone. Different predicting, you can predict crop production and yield. You can optimize. You can optimize irrigation, fertilization, and seeding. You can assess. You can assess soil moisture, nutrient deficiencies, and crop stress, okay? You can also identify, you can identify crop varieties and areas of uneven ground. And early warning, you can do early, these payloads can do early warning of things like disease before they spread, okay? So, I know right now, I talked to a couple people who were farmers right where I live, and they said, yeah, I know a guy who's using, but he's, he uses it just to spray lime on a hill that's like this, and that's the only thing that it's being used for. In order to use an unmanned system, you have to be certified by the FAA under Part 107, okay? In order to do it for hire. But a lot of people are going out and they're getting drones and they're just using what they hear they can do. What I am proposing is a course, a course of study that allows a person to become a professional in this field, where they can make a living at it or even having some just general certifications through the school, where a farmer who has, you know, a large enough farm can come in and he or she can really benefit from this technology, okay? I've used these before, I know all about them, and I know the different people who manufacture them. And, you know, the, the old saying is if you build it, they will come, okay? So, if we build it, I believe that we can get manufacturers in. Because if you're going to move a company or start up a company at a specific location, you need a skilled workforce to, to do the job, okay? Whether it be manufacturing, whether it be flying. But if we build that workforce here and then we advertise, hey, we have that workforce here, then we'll get more manufacturing of unmanned systems and who knows what, okay? Okay, so the aviation studies student future pacing, right? So, first and foremost, this is an avenue that should serve the student, okay? So, as a, developing the curriculum, standing up a program, supporting a program, we have to think ourselves as students, as servants to the student, okay? So, all degree programs should be transferable to any Virginia university for follow-on education leading to a bachelor's in aviation or a related degree, right? So, we would have to do some kind of networking with some local four-year colleges for them. However, this program should be standalone too, okay? When that person graduates with that associate degree, they need to become employable immediately and locally, right? And they should be able to do it in their degree field. When a person goes through the piloting program, when they graduate, they should graduate with a CFI, Certified Flight Instructor. And then there's other certifications you get underneath that. You get your, in order to teach flying airplanes by instrument, flying through clouds, things like that, and then multi-engine, you have two, two engines, and then eventually like to go to something that has something to do with rotary wing. So, when this, when a person graduates from the college, then they become a flight instructor. And then we have those jobs right here, right here at the airport, okay? So, basically, you're a student, you're a student, you graduate, you have a job right here, okay? And you're a flight instructor teaching students to come off the airport, okay? And then after you get a certain amount of time under your belt, then you go apply for a job with a commuter, and you build your way up. I'll talk more about that in a second. And these, the skills that they attain here should be transferable skills into other fields of employment too, okay? Let's be real, all right? Because, you know, some people, they'll start the program, they're like, all right, I want to do something else. Well, everything that we're doing here would translate to things, okay? All right, so employment after graduation, we already talked about piloting. When you, they graduate, they become employable right off the bat, right here at the college, at the airport over here, but also the surrounding satellite airports, okay? There are other general aviation airports around that are screaming for flight instructors, okay? And in addition, as this program grows, you know, a lot of these other airports may want to have some flight schools in there too. And then this would allow them to get a job there. Eventually, when a person goes through the piloting program, they're going to get picked up by an airline, United, American, so on and so forth. And when that occurs, due to the dynamics of the schedule of a professional pilot, you, a lot of these guys, they, like, you could be hopped out of Atlanta and then they've gone through their schooling here, they grew up here, they could still live here. Because they'll fly, they'll hop out of Atlanta, they'll fly for a week, two weeks, whatever the schedule is, take, you know, flight jump seat, land at either Roanoke or Charlotte, drive home, spend their time at home, go do it again. So, that, that's a normal way of pilot culture, okay? In addition to that, aircraft mechanics. So, an aircraft mechanic, as soon as they graduate, there's available position right here to maintain our, the fleet of general aviation aircraft, they'll have a job. And they're not very far from Roanoke. Charlotte's a couple hours away. There's, there's ample opportunity. And those are also transferable skills to do other things. However, being a certified AMP, and if we can get a lot, who knows? Maybe we can get a depot to come here after this program is stood up, after we have this AMP program too, okay? Unmanned systems, I talked about that a little bit, but with an unmanned system, you can inspect light, light poles, bridges, there's so many things you could do with an unmanned system, a drone, okay? And there's, there's a lot of industries that need educated and licensed drone operators, real estate agents. Anybody ever look for a house, they show that drone flying around? That's a Part 107 certification person that probably sold that to them or the realtor actually helped themselves with 107 certified. But there's so much more you can do. Okay, so here's your economic development. This is local growth, okay? So, demand for flight instructors is hot, and it's going to stay hot for a very, very long time because there's a huge pilot shortage right now, and that, that is expected to continue to be very difficult to fill because there are not too many people getting their pilot's license following that career. It used to have a career path where somebody go into the military, they fly for a while, and then they go into the airlines. But now the military is offering really great incentives for, to keep their pilots. So, here's the salary. Salary for a flight instructor, the average salary for a flight instructor in Virginia, according to that website, I think it was Indeed, I can't read it from here, but I looked it up the other day, it said it was $87,000. Now, I think that number's a little high, but that's, that was the average that they came up with. They made about $41.98 now, okay? Keep in mind, that's Northern Virginia, Southern Virginia, that's the whole state, okay? So, it's relative for you. So, AMP new jobs, airframe and power plant, so mechanics being hired here locally. As of May, the 2023, the median annual salary for airline pilots was about $219,000 a year, while the median annual salary for commercial pilots was about $113, okay? Excuse me. So, this will also bring additional airport construction jobs and projects, because this is going to have to support the program. And as that program grows, it justifies us to approach the FAA, to approach the state, to approach the feds and say, hey, we need money. Give us some money. This is also would increase your agricultural, agricultural production through the remote sensing, and that would increase revenue because of the efficiency, okay? This program would attach, would attract people in the county primarily, that's our focus, okay? But it would also attract people in the state, at a state, everywhere. Aviation program will usually attract people from other places too. So, that, that would lead to more growth, more spending too. And five to 10 years, this could create, this is my personal opinion, based on looking at the community college that I went to years and years ago, we had over 100 jobs there from that. So, I think that this, if we started a program here for this, I think it would, it would bring in a new industry, a new technology, and higher paid jobs. So, to wrap it up, I wonder if you support this plan? I know it's, it was a lot to take in, and if, you know, anybody wants to talk to me offline about, you know, what drones can do or whatever, feel free. My, my telephone number is on that, is in one of these slides. Now, mainly what I want, if you can support this, is I need you to assist me in networking and get this off the ground. Like I said, I haven't introduced myself to the president of the college yet, and I also wanted to determine what steps are next that you guys might know about, and I don't. That concludes my presentation. Are there any comments, questions? Talk offline sometime.
Mr. Letterer?
Hi.
I'd like to thank you for coming tonight. I invited you here because he gave the airport commission a presentation similar to this about two weeks ago, and the entire airport commission unanimously endorsed the concept. You are most certainly in the crawl phase. What I like about it is there are many aviation-related programs where you can get an associate's degree and move on and do bigger and better things somewhere else. He's absolutely right that people can make really good salaries, live here and commute somewhere else. I did it for 35 years at the airline and 30 years in the military, and, you know, we want our children to stay here to work. You know, everybody says, well, they went off to college and they never came back. Well, this is an opportunity to keep them here and to provide good, well-paying jobs for them while for them while they're here. So I like the concept, we can certainly get together with Mike and others to figure out how to network. You do need to go see the college and surrounding counties and cities, get their buy-in, I think you already know that, but I think it's a program worth pursuing, and money is going to have to be put into this from somewhere. I imagine it's going to have to be state and federal, and we have an opportunity to present that later this week to some of our state and federal representatives, which we plan to do.
Excellent. Now, this, this is a marathon. Make no mistake about that, this is definitely a marathon. It's not a sprint. And, you know, I, I'd like to lead the effort, I'd like to lead the effort and the program. And I'm, I'm politely tenacious when it comes to getting funding for a program. Resourceful also. So I didn't want to approach the college yet, I wanted to make sure that the airport was on board first, then I wanted to make sure that the county's on board first, so I don't want to just show up and say, hey, I'm Larry. So I just wanted to say, this, this is what I want to do, and I'd like for you to consider it, and we have a discussion about it another time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, next on the agenda is emergency services update, I asked Mr. Bergeron. Mr. Edmonds and Mr. Phelps. Hello, there y'all?
Good evening, everyone.
Goodbye.
We spent the last twelve, thirteen, thirteen days straight, kind of coming this together, so we're. Good evening, thank you all for having us. So we'll share with you all just a brief summary of what our response and actions were to was Tropical System Nine, then turned Hurricane, Hurricane Valine and the impact for our area. On nine-twenty-five, we officially opened our EOC and began monitoring the system that was coming through, along with the tropical updates that we were receiving from National Weather Service each morning. So from nine-twenty-five up through ten-six, we tried to consistently post weather awareness and tips and things from VDM via social media. We also started, as we were receiving those in, sending the emails out to our area departments and county admin, sheriff's office, to the National Weather Service, those daily updates that became tropical briefs and then hurricane forecast up to the point when the storm actually hit. We were in a virtual EOC operation up until the twenty-ninth, when we were able to stop immediately assessing it, and these gentlemen also supported county response, and then we were able to sit up right here in the conference room next to the county administrator's office. From there, we started making our request for assistance to VDM immediately after the, the storm had cleared out. We can first thank our volunteers, community partners, local churches. Our, our effort was greatly supported by all those groups that we just mentioned. We had charging and water filling shelters at our volunteer stations that were supported with standby generators. So on top of all the response that our volunteer staff contributed to during the event, they also manned those stations during that distribution. I couldn't calculate the man-hours, we asked them to, so we could track that, but an absolute and incredible feat for them to support their local communities the way they did staffing for those distributions. So we continued those requests for assistance for water and heater meals. Daily, we did those from nine-thirty through ten-four. We had several outside donations coordinated. Two church groups came in on Saturday with large trailer loads, and that was also distributed some yesterday and throughout to the community as well. We had IMT support team, that's Incident Management Team, they came in and supported us for three days in some planning, and also out in the community, that was organized by Mr. Edmonds, to do our damage assessments. We had one day where county staff and some of you all joined us to team up and go help try to assess, but we have four-hundred-and-seventy-six square miles of damage assessments we were trying to get our eyes and details on. We also enacted our debris management. We had roll-off dumpsters placed at Grace Baptist, Midway Baptist, Carrollton Pike, across from Hills Trucking, Laurel Ford, Crooked Oak Station, Cana Fire, and Hillsville Station Three for the Doug'sboro area, and it was also coordinated that that debris could go directly deposited to the landfill. I was in touch with Alan Lawson again earlier today on that progress and how, what he was receiving and how that was going for our debris management. Within our EOC, when we were able to establish in person here, our operations were also supported by county staff daily. We had maintenance, Kevin and his crew at the farmer's market, administrative support staff, HR, finance, an absolute invaluable contribution to coordinating our response and then recovery efforts on their parts. Again, within our operations, Mr. Phelps was what we had, ESF four, central function four, fire and rescue, and he was our daily liaison to our volunteer and career staff in those operations. Mr. Edmonds, I had him as our logistics and operations, so when we had the IMT support teams come in to help with damage assessments and surveys, he coordinated those efforts. So if they would like to take a few minutes and report out on, on their operations. Thank you.
As I said earlier about reaching out to the squads and the fire departments, they were ready and willing to jump in there and help us out any way possible. People, you know, handing out the water that we got in, the heater meals, and anything else that we asked of. And they even called numerous times to ask, what can we do, where can we go, where is there a need at? And we, we rely heavily on our volunteers. And, you know, the fire department and the rescue squad, endless hours out cutting trees out of the road, opening roads, and we've had a good, a lot of good feedback from the community about them helping get the roads open to get the help in there too. And we couldn't have done it by ourselves, it took all of us working together to be able to do this.
I'd just like to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to come up and give you a little bit of feedback and perspective from our side. Again, just like these gentlemen said, it's been a team effort. We were just folks in the wheel, all the volunteers in the county pulled together, they're the ones that saved our families and our friends whenever things started getting bad on the twenty-seventh, because they, as well as all the other volunteers that are out here, got the notifications early from Mr. Bergeron and Mr. Phelps, we all were able to pull our resources together. We had unknown amount of man-hours before this storm ever got here, just for preparation, so we could take care of each other. What they did and the volunteer agencies going out, they didn't clear the roadways, they just opened the roadways, and then later on, on Friday, when VDOT was able to get out with their resources and finish up the job and actually widen the roads to where we could get apparatus through it, it made everybody's job a lot easier. We got the FEMA team in and VDM team was here, we was able to give them one of the maps, give them specific locations that we had got feedback from our volunteers where we knew they were miles and miles of wires down and tree damage, and the VDM team was able to go out and do some research, came back with specific locations that they saw the most amount of damage, and then on the socket, we had county employees come in, we had over twenty registered, we got mileage at about eight hours per team logged in that day, we even got some aerial photographs to help, you know, either pinpoint or eliminate some of the areas of concern, which was a key part to build on Thursday, whenever we got both VDM and FEMA come in, I had three from VDM and I had four FEMA representatives with me, and I was able to escort them around to the areas that were, we were able to pinpoint on Tuesday and Wednesday. Thursday, they were able to directly input these structures that had been damaged right on into the crisis track, which gets those folks on the radar for any possible assistance that we may eventually qualify. You know, we got out and done face-to-face conversations with the residents and was able to guide them through VDM and FEMA on being able to go in and update their personal crisis track with photographs that they had before we were able to get to them. So, you know, I think we were able to pull it together, utilize the resources available. We spent pretty much all weekend bringing in the food and things that were being donated to us and working with Kevin. He was, you know, awesome to us, he was very patient, he offered us anything that he had. And then, you know, on Sunday, we were able to get that food out and water, and still reaching out through the churches to be able to make sure that all of our families and all of our neighbors and everybody that needs that resource. In the beginning, it was a little bit of a struggle, because there was a communication breakdown. We had our information from the volunteers where they had responded to the calls, we had information from the county staff that had time to go out and look for us on the socket, and then on the third, we gathered just a little bit more and actually input that footage into crisis track to get us on the radar at the state and federal level, and we've just been building on it every day since then. Thank y'all for giving us the opportunity.
Thank you. As of this evening, we had forty-two entries into that crisis track software that he had mentioned, and that's everything from major damage, minor structural damage, to debris management, partial road closures, and damage to, for example, the water bridge right there, Freeze Road and Dixon Road. Combined data out of what the sheriff's office provided me and what we have from CCOM, so this would be both sets of reporting, that's three-hundred-and-three calls for service in the operation period. They defined our operation period as nine-twenty-five through ten-three. So that was three-hundred-and-three calls for service that were fire and rescues every day, general sick and response calls, to include sixty-seven trees down, reported trees down, forty-three reports of lines down, nine reports of fire directly related to trees and lines, and then twenty-seven welfare checks that were performed by the sheriff's office. So as stated, the, the networking that our community showed and displayed and the joint response of Carroll County Public Schools stepping up and immediately opening up the new portion of the gym with individual showers and hot meals. I had Lambesburg, Miss Hawks from Lambesburg Community Center, said by that Friday, they were up and running, able to also do water fills and hot meals out of that kitchen. I've got, and you'll have to forgive me, we spent the day trying to update crisis track, but I've got numerous emails, our daily notes, our CitRep reports that we turned into VDM, I'll gladly make you all the information packet on. But the, again, the partnership, the community stakeholders, just the outpour of support and response that we had is what made our response and efforts possible. Unless you all have any questions for us.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you for the opportunity.
Appreciate everything you did.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Next on agenda is the public hearing for enterprise zone amendment. Wasn't it at seven-fifty-eight? Okay, we want to close the public hearing for enterprise zone amendment at seven-fifty-nine. This is to expand the enterprise zone section, so entertain a motion. Everybody wants to?
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion, Mr. Eardle, do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, I'll start the voting with Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Eardle?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Another yes. Next on the agenda is the public hearing for disposition of property, I'm opening it at eight o'clock. Mr. Newman, you about to come up then? Have no one else signed up for?
Good evening. What we are looking at is three surplus lots on Woodlong School property. One lot would be one-point-two-six-nine acres fronting on Grandview Street, Grandview Drive. The other two lots would be on the west side of what's now Woodlong Apartments, Woodlong School Apartments. The first lot, the one nearest the school, contains the house on it, is point-eight-five-eight acres, and the one beside it is point-six-three-two acres. Those two lots, if approved, would be offered individually, then also offered to be blocked if, if one. And the outside boundaries of those, just from the Woodlong Road, the property line between us and the apartment buildings up to the point, northwest point, it's up nearest the tennis courts, then it goes on an angle down to our next-door neighbor, to the corner we share with them, back down to Woodlong Road and the left road. We're looking at a November ninth auction, if it's approved by you all. Is there any questions?
I'll have any, anybody in?
Thank you for your work on that, Ron.
Sir, I appreciate it. We enclose the public hearing at eight-oh-two, and I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we move forward with this and Harrow Dog move forward with the auction.
It'll be on November ninth?
Yes.
Okay, that's wonderful. I have a motion to go ahead and proceed with the sale, which will be November ninth, and it will be by dawn auction, we'll sell it, the property, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I'll start the voting with Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Eardle?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Another yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You're, you're doing a couple things here, so if I could ask the board to consider another motion as well, and that's just a motion to approve the subdivision of land as discussed, and have those subdivided properties, those plats of subdivision recorded with the, with the circuitry.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I have a motion, Mr. Collins?
Second. Second, on Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next on the agenda is Citizens Time. I have one person signed up, Teresa Easter.
Thanks for having me. I'm actually here talking for Rhonda Lutcher because she is under the weather, and she got a message from a member that volunteered in Carroll County during the storm, and they had compared how Grayson County was prepared for this. Everything together, had the meals, the pallets, and was taking more oxygen tanks out, and I personally know myself that there was one lady that lives close to Ronnie, that her husband was on oxygen, had to go get a motel room so her husband could be able to breathe. I have, she had commented and I talked to her, because when the power was coming on, I was, I guess you would say, a central station, because I know people here and there, they were telling me, well, I made a post on Facebook. It's public, about where the power was coming on, another lady with two kids went and got a motel room because her two children has to have breathing treatments. I got a message that was sent to Rhonda that she sent to me, that, don't get me wrong, I'm glad they opened up the high school, but that high school is nowhere near big enough for the people in Carroll County. There was a girl that's got three kids, went up there, the line was long enough. I don't know if she got served, but it was, I don't know, I didn't get to finish on that. But we need, and we have in Cana and throughout Carroll County, had places that when the storms come and the Red Cross come in, they put up cots at St. Paul's School. We need to get that back, because people, and right now, I'm working with people in Cana, right now, that has failed between the cracks. They lost everything in their refrigerators, their freezers. I'm working, trying to parry them up with people to help them replace food. If you get snapped, you can file for that and get it. Insurance companies, a lot won't cover because we're in the mountains, and I've seen a couple that their insurance dropped them because they made a report, because we're in the mountains, the hurricanes, tornadoes and stuff, it's, they don't want to pay. So, we have got, as a county, get something in here and get something done. And another thing I want to talk on is our fire chief with Cana Fire.
Thank you, Ms. Easter. Your job's up.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, we'd like to add our names for Citizens Time.
Okay.
My name is Janet Blanding.
Wait till you come to the podium, please.
My name is Janet Blanding, and Tiffany Freeman also wants to.
Janet Blanding?
Blanding with a B.
Blanding, okay.
L, A, N, D-I-N-G. So, I appreciate the chance to speak.
Oh, just a second, let me start this.
I appreciate the chance to speak. I came here tonight because I'd like to understand why Carroll County is not getting FEMA individual disaster assistance. So, I emailed Mr. Watson this morning, and he provided a helpful bit of information about how Carroll had not substantiated enough damage to get this kind of assistance, the FEMA individual disaster assistance, and he directed me to Crisis Track. And so, I and several of my neighbors uploaded information about our damage to Crisis Track. I still have some questions, though, and I'm hoping I can get some information. First, is, it sounds as if uploading damage documentation to VDM Crisis Track is ongoing by the county. I hope that I understood that correctly, but the gentleman in the fuchsia t-shirt sounded like that was happening. Another question I have is, is there a certain threshold of damage that a county needs to meet in order to be eligible for FEMA individual disaster assistance? What is the threshold we have to meet to get it? I know that many neighboring counties and Galax have already become eligible for this assistance. Why aren't we? If I, you know, I haven't done a careful assessment of these places, but I know there's a lot of damage in Carroll as well as in those areas. I'd also like to know if the county is planning any outreach to learn about property damage experienced by county residents they don't know about yet, because I know a lot of people that have not encountered anyone from FEMA or the county to document their damage. So, I'm wondering if you're going to be speaking to the newspaper about it, if you're going to use social media, or if you have other plans for learning how much damage has occurred because of the hurricane in Carroll County. And that's it. I appreciate your help and the communications I've received so far from Mr. Watson. Thanks.
If you're sorry, thank you.
And what's your name again? I'm sorry.
Tiffany Freeman.
Tiffany Freeman?
Yeah, thank you for hearing us. I wanted to echo the concerns of misplanning. Just to speak, I live just in the last inhabited house before Billsby Dam, and a lot of people don't know that that's part of Carroll County, but it is. And I have a family of eight. I have six children, half of which are adopted through our county's foster system. They have special needs. We were encouraged by police during the events of last Friday to evacuate due to our location. It was a pretty traumatizing event for kids that have already been pretty traumatized in their life. There were announcements saying a loss of life is imminent, please evacuate to safer ground. It was dark, there were people holding their pets on the side of the road, crying. It was traumatic, there were trees down everywhere. We own about seven acres, and I would say probably we have maybe 25 trees just on our property alone. There was 15 or 12 breakage points in the line between the dam and our house alone. We were out of power for over a week. We have a whole house generator because we know the risks associated with where we live. Our generator was lost in the storm. We've had wind and rain damage to our home. My husband and I both work from home, we homeschool our children. The cost in terms of loss to employment situations has, when you compound all of it, we've had well over $10,000 to $15,000 in loss alone at our property, most of which will not be covered by homeowner's insurance. In a moment of hope, I went to FEMA disaster site, hoping that maybe we would be able to qualify for some disaster relief or assistance, and was told that Carroll County is not a disaster site, which feels a little bit upside down considering what we experienced. We also support a neighbor of ours who is rehabilitating out of prison. Between us and him, have lost all the food out of our freezers, our fridges, et cetera. We also have multiple of these special needs kids require, like the lady before mentioned, oxygen, sleep apnea machines to keep them breathing in the night. Just a lot of loss, and I would encourage our county leadership to really take seriously if there's some kind of action that we can take to procure FEMA disaster assistance. I know that that's going on in places like Asheville because there's large population centers, but just because you have lost your home, and we passed when we were evacuating people whose homes were, there was water up to their roofs on their RVs, their trailers, their homes. Just because you don't live in an area that has a high population doesn't mean that your loss is any less significant. So, we have had financial losses, we've had structural losses, other people in our area have, and I just feel like that needs to be taken seriously as the folks that live in a more congested area. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve A, B, C be together or separate.
I'll make a motion to approve A, B, and C and D as a.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I'll start the voting with Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So, you done, Mr. Early? Can we carry on?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Thank you.
We'll change it.
Yeah. Next on the agenda, entertain a motion to approve the consent counter?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Start the voting with Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And next on agenda is an entertaining motion to approve the invoices, either A, B, and C together or separate?
I'll make the motion to approve A, B, and C together.
Okay, have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Yes, start the voting with Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That brings us to new business, the holiday resolution that was presented in your packet. I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, have a motion, Mr. Moore, do I have a second?
Second.
Start the voting with Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And next on the agenda is the road abandonment, you receive in your packet. Mr. Newman, you want to speak on this?
We've had two landowners at the end of Wade Road. Wade Road turns off of Marion Road and dead ends at Big Greed Island. Mr. and Ms. Slaughter and Ms. Larchen have requested that the discontinued Wade Road that goes through their property be abandoned. Slaughter property is the one that is closest to where the discontinuation starts. The Larchen property is between them and Big Greed, but what they've told me is that the Larchen property is accessed by actually crossing Big Greed instead of coming down through the Slaughter property. I have talked to them, they assured me that there would be a continued easement for the Larchen property through the Slaughter property. If you so desire, I hold a public hearing, I would recommend that we do that in December due to the 30-day posted notice that's required when we have a discontinuance or an abandonment They have met all the.
Ms. Easter? Any big lot, please? Thank you.
They have completed all the required steps up to this point, so now it's just a decision if the board wants to follow through with the public hearing phase and then a decision at that point.
And your recommendation is?
I'll ask Mr. Early because it's in his back door.
Well, it is, it's right next door to where I live. I'm somewhat familiar with it. Tell me again now, the Larchen property, is it on the other side of Big Greed?
The Larchen property actually lies on both sides of Big Greed.
But they get to their property off of 58 on the other side of the river?
That's what they tell me, is they come down into the river and cross the river, actually ford the river to get to their property. And it's all farmland.
Okay, so they ford the river to get to the part that's on the same side as Slaughter?
Correct.
I was not aware that there was a cemetery there.
I'm not either. Where is it?
I think I saw that in the abandonment, that there was a cemetery that only had a couple of graves.
Yeah, I think you're right on that, yeah. State law, you can't block access to a cemetery.
Right, but it's, also, you cannot block access to the public, not just the relatives of those buried there. Correct. Is that correct?
That's the way I understand it.
I initially was, had no problem with it, but I do have a few concerns that I just brought up, so I don't know if we should table it or go ahead with the public hearing and then let this board make the decision. I'm not going to stop it if that's what the board wants to do.
Whichever way you want to do, and I will further investigate the cemetery issue.
Okay, I think we need more time to do that.
Okay.
Do you not, do you think so? You, Ron, did investigate that?
I will investigate and report back to you all when I find out.
Okay, so perhaps we should table this discussion until after December?
The November meeting?
Sure. I'll make a motion that it be tabled until next month.
I'll second.
Okay. Have a motion, and we table it, have a second. I'll start the voting with Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you. I'll try to meet with Mr. Slaughter and have him show me where that is.
Yeah, I'd like to know where it is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And next on the agenda is the A, B increased resolution, you receive in your packets. The resolution is a statement of opposition to Appalachian Power Company rate increases, whereas Appalachian Power Company continues to request rate increases for electric bills of their residential customers in Carroll County, Virginia. Whereas many of the citizens of Carroll County, Virginia, depend upon a fixed income, and virtually all citizens are struggling to cope with increased food, medicine, fuel, and utility costs due to inflation. Whereas it is unfair to constantly shift cost increases from a multi-billion dollar corporation with a guaranteed rate of return on equity to its customers. Many on a fixed income are already struggling with skyrocketing cost, and now therefore be resolved that the Carroll County Board of Supervisors states their opposition to any further rate increases requested by Appalachian Power Company without some type of reduction in the Appalachian Power Company's rate of return on equity to prevent unfair shifting of costs from Appalachian Power Company to its residential customers. If we approve this, this resolution will be adopted on October 7th, 2024.
I'll make a motion, we adopt.
Okay, have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Start the voting with Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
And I vote yes. I'm sorry, Mr. Moore?
I'll agree.
And I vote yes. Next on agenda is the nature of conservancy tax exemption request that you receive in your packet.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that we table that to the next month's meeting, give us a little more time to read over that, get a better understanding.
Okay, have a motion to table, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I'll start the voting with Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next on the agenda is grants for the community centers and nonprofits.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to table A and B.
Have a motion for A and B to table until November, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, start the voting with Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And next on the agenda is ratify declaration of local emergency. It's a resolution, declaration of a local emergency, whereas the county administrator serving as the Director of Emergency Management of Carroll County did hereby find hazardous weather and road conditions exist in the county. A large number of trees and roads blocked have been reported impeding safe travel. Emergency flash flood warning alert has been issued by National Weather Service. County conditions will continue to be impacted due to severe weather for the next 24 hours. Now, therefore, it is proclaimed that said emergency exists throughout Carroll County, and be it further resolved and ordered that during the existences of said emergency, the powers, functions, and duties to the Director of Emergency Management and the Emergency Management Organization of Carroll County shall be those prescribed by the state law and ordinance resolutions and approved plans of Carroll County in order to mitigate, mitigate or the efforts of said emergency. This will be in effect now September 27th, 2024. Leave the end date for now. Have a motion to approve this?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Start the voting with Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And next on our business is fire and rescue. And next under old business is fire and rescue billing that we discussed last, last minute that we tabled. Entertain a motion to approve it or?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, have a motion with Mr. Moore, do I have a second?
Could, could you clarify what was tabled last?
It was the fire and rescue billing. Um, Mr. Watson, you want to speak on that? Let him.
What, uh, we were looking at is our current agreement with, uh, with A and B has expired. And one of the things that we're looking for is, uh, approval to negotiate the contract with them, and that would include EMS and fire billing. Uh, we did go out for bids, they went through the evaluation process, and now we're asking to go to the negotiation con, in order to have an agreement so that, uh, uh, I guess we'll be in compliance.
Because it has expired, did you, you said with A and B?
Yes. Okay, um.
It's an insulin, it's a, um, a filling service.
Uh, okay, all right, I'll, all right.
I'll second that.
Mr. Moore says? I'll start the vote with Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Earle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, that brings us to board member comments. I will start with Mr. Horton.
I just want to say I'm very proud of the county I live in and all the response from the local churches and all the volunteers that helped this emergency. And, uh, I just want to say thank you for the combined effort of everything that everybody done to take care of all their citizens in the county. I'm very proud to be a part of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horton, Mr. Bryant?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the staff and all the county employees and, uh, uh, all the, uh, uh, community members, uh, citizens, everybody just came together to, uh, help, help one another during this, this, uh, disaster time and, uh, just, uh, uh, thank everybody for, for doing that.
Uh, Mr. Collins?
Yeah, I'll just start with, uh, I'll echo what Greg said. I'm proud of Carroll County, proud to live in this county. I'll start with Mike and Gary and Jason and Dale doing an outstanding job of pulling things together and seeing our communities working together. I mean, it, I worked specifically in the Fancy Gap area with the Kana Volunteer Fire Department, Lansburg Community Center, multiple churches, lots of people who just came out of the woodwork to help these organizations, along with the work that was carried out. It was outstanding, made me proud. Sometimes it's sad, but it takes tragedies oftentimes to bring communities together. And, and it brought our community together there in the Fancy Gap district, so I, I appreciate that. Carroll County School System, Sheriff's Department, uh, and we could go on and on and on. And, and I will say, and Mike, you can correct me if I'm, I, my information, I spoke with one of our state representatives today who said that our work that has been put in with, with FEMA, that it's with the governor, and that the governor is now going to carry that further to see if we can get approved for whatever we need to be approved for.
Yes, uh, from my understanding that they're reviewing this area to see if there's some way to qualify, it's just, it's a difficult procedure that just, you know, it's very difficult. It, it has everything to do with, uh, not only loss, but, I mean, it's damage to roads, it is, uh, casualties, I mean, there is a lot more that goes into it, but I think the governor is really concerned about southwest Virginia.
And I'm just close by saying, uh, just before all this happened, my 83-year-old mother fell and broke her hip. And then, uh, she'll tell you that we've got the greatest EMS service there is anywhere. They, they treated her well and she's proud of them, so I'm proud of them.
Thank you, Mr. Collins, Mr. Earle?
Well, I'd like to first thank the staff and all the agencies throughout the county that put in double overtime the past couple of weeks with the emergency that we had plopped in our lap. You know, when there's a fire, the heroes run towards the fire. There are many unsung heroes out there that don't ask for recognition, don't want recognition, but they, they were there to help neighbors and do other things. So I want to thank them unnamed, but I want to thank them. Also, I would like to, uh, ask this board in the form of a motion for a resolution of support for the aviation training program presented tonight. This support to include assistance with networking with, with Community College and other stakeholders of Twin County Airport. Further, to pursue startup funding from state and federal entities. I, I'll make that a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, have a motion, I have a second. I'll start the vote with, uh? Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Earle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you. Go ahead.
I'll say, thank you, sir.
All right, Mr. Moore?
I just, um, you know, want to echo everybody's, um, comment, you know, I've served this board now, getting ready to finish up my sixth year, and, uh, I've enjoyed every day of it, you know? There've been a lot of growing things at times and a lot of different, different avenues we went through and hopefully we made some accomplishments during, during that tenure. And, um, just sort of like Greg said, you know, I'm proud of what Carroll County done, you know, they stepped up, you know, unfortunately, you know, the funding sometimes don't seem like it's there. It's a lot of times the way it is when you're in southwest Virginia. We are tough, you know, and we will be resilient to it, you know? I want to thank, uh, our sheriff's office, our EMS, uh, police department, the fire and rescue, all of our volunteers, the churches, the community center, everybody that's played a huge role. Uh, Mike and, and, um, Gary and, and thank y'all for all y'all done to, to make sure that our citizens get the best opportunity they can with this. Uh, I want to personally thank the board, you know, they, I think we spent more time together over the last week on the phone and conversation than, than we do in years' time all gathered, you know? I can't remember many times that I spoke with Ronnie Collins every day on the phone for a week, you know, or Joey and, um, you know, I know some of our, our board members went and helped other areas too that were in a dire strait. It just, it's always been a blessing to serve as citizens of the county and, um, it was a blessing to see how our community can work together and I always, I always remember that, you know? It's, uh, sad, you know? I think we're all probably, sitting here probably didn't have power for five days and my refrigerator freezer stuff was disposed of too, but I also want to thank the board for doing what they doing with the dumpsters and stuff to help our citizens and all the landfills and all for taking that, taking that trash.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. I'll go last. The, um, first one, start off by thanking, uh, Gary and Dale and Jason, uh, Mr. Watson, we, you know, talked over the weekend, uh, you know, working hard getting this started. Um, you know, it, it, a lot of our linemen had left the area, not, our AEP, not putting them down, they were going to Florida because they weren't expecting this, but the other linemen that, that came in, they did a good job of restoring power. And, and I'll tell you what I saw over this course of the week. I spent some time in the county, spent some time with Galaks, uh, Mr. Kane did come in, uh, Tim Kane, a look at the Carroll County area with me a little bit Monday evening. Uh, they have applied for, for FEMA, for funding, but, uh, there's a lot of, you know, we're, we're blessed, we don't have the roads that's washed out by Grayson County, we don't have the flood and the businesses like Galax, we don't have Damascus where there's no roads. Um, you know, there, there's no road there at all. We're not western North Carolina, we're not, uh, you know, Tennessee, um, we're very blessed. Yeah, it was tragic, but Carroll County bared very well, um, in this storm. I mean, I, I do hope we'll get funding, I'm not saying that we shouldn't, but, um, we have a lot to be dreadful for, a lot. I mean, you, people's lost their homes, I mean, losing, losing a, uh, uh, you know, losing a home and, and no way to go back. Chimy Rock, I mean, it, it's hard telling when those citizens are able to be back. Uh, the roads in Damascus and the upper part of Grayson County, they have a lot of work to do, but what I saw from the community, starting with God Storehouse, you know, Monday night, they were serving, taking food to the linemen, churches were stepping up, where I, I, I can't name all the churches in the community that stepped up, I mean, I would miss them. I mean, I, about every church I know, starting with Hillville, uh, PH, Woodlong, Christ Chapel, Blue Ridge, I mean, every church, uh, stepped up in a big way, the community, the citizens. And that's what it takes, is people to step in and, and do, uh, help and do things. Uh, AEP, BDOC, our, of course, our emergency management county employees, um, the sheriff's office, the job, the role they played in, in controlling the roads and reporting back to, to Gary and, uh, uh, BDOC and, and letting us know what was going on. Um, the health department, you know, checking on, um, their, uh, the senior citizens, Mel Rogers, I mean, it, it checks on, uh, checking on, uh, people, the, the citizens of the Galax and we, you know, we sit back and forth with our neighbors. It's just, it's just amazing, I'm humbled by the, the help and support that I have, that I have seen in the community. Uh, the, the guys at PSA, you know, talking to Mr. Moore every, every day during the weekend and we had no power, but we kept the water, they kept the water flowing, you know? Didn't have power a lot of places, but they kept the water flowing, they'd use generators, uh, to keep the water going, but, um, the people that were on county water didn't go about. And if you've got county water, you don't have power, you can't flush it, you can't hose it, so that makes a big difference. Um, but, uh, and I do thank the board, um, you know, Mr. Mr. Earle, Mr. Bryant were, were doing some heroic things in my opinion, serving some other much needed areas, but they kept in contact and, and anything they can do in Carroll County was, we, we divide and conquer is, is the best way to do the thing. And, uh, I just want to appreciate, I appreciate everything that's done and I appreciate the people that's come out and talked tonight. And other than that, we'll go to, uh, Mr. Watson, do you have anything?
I don't know how you can follow that. That pretty much spoke, uh, uh, explained the, uh, storm and the commitment that the community had. You know, a lot of, a lot of the, uh, you see people that stepped up during this time and, and do it on a normal basis, a lot of times they put themselves before their family and so they're out there, you know, during a hurricane providing services when, uh, they've got families at home as well, you know? So, and you need to, it, it's, it's very humble, is the only word that I can say, and I think that, uh, entire board spoke, uh, on spot. I had the opportunity for the last week and a half to, to be around three gentlemen that, uh, lived, lived this storm, you know? I mean, even when I had the opportunity to go home, they were making calls, doing these type of things. We had a lot of staff that stepped up. I sent out a request for, uh, employees to help and it was amazing the number of people that were able to step up and help. So, we're all able to come together and I think that, uh, this was a success.